A call to order. The Planning Commission, public hearing in regular session, Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tazwell Avenue, November 9th, 2021. Roll call, please. Grossman, President.
Buda, President.
McCoy, President.
Strode, President.
Holloway, President.
We have a call. Let it be shown that Commissioner Diamico is not present. She's ill. At this time, we'll have a stand for a short moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. So our first order of business is the annual reorganization of the board, election of officers for a term of one year, chairman and vice chairman. So do I have a... Anybody want to make a motion for the chair?
I'll make a motion if Bill Stram continues as chair.
I second that.
All right. Any other nominations? Hearing none, do I have a vote for Bill Stram as the chairman? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vice chairman, do I have a motion for vice chair?
Make a motion for Dennis McCoy.
Second. All right. Any other nominations? All right. All in favor for Dennis McCoy as vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Done.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. Does anyone object to approval of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing, no objection to the action. We will then approve, be taken by unanimous consent. Next item is public hearing. Just a second, I have to read this. Cape Charles Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tazwell Avenue, to receive a comment on the following request. Conditional use permit application from Sam and Amy Scharf at 410 Harbor Avenue, tax map number 83 Alpha A-2-8-7 in the residential 1 zoning district for an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to...
Hey, Tracy.
Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section 3.2, Bowleg C., Bowleg 7, and 4.2, Bowlegs J.
Same with Joey Ed.
B., a conditional use permit application from Tom and Katie Austin as the contract purchasers for DBA Cape Charles Mini Golf with consent from property owners John F. and Lorraine A. Hutchler and Daniel C. Dabinett at Randolph Avenue, directly across from Heritage Acres Court, tax map number 83 Alpha 4-1-B-26, 83 Alpha 4-1-B-27, 83 Alpha 4-1-28, and 83 Alpha 4-1-B-29 in the commercial 3 zoning district for a mini golf course pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section 3-8, Bowlegs B., Bowlegs 2. And a conditional use permit application from Todd Bricken, contract purchaser, with consent from property owners Paul G. Watson III and William D. Watson at 219 Mason Avenue, tax map number 83 Alpha 3-1-631 in the commercial 1 zoning district for five dwelling units on second floor above first floor, commercial pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section 3-6, Bowleg C. All right, so...
And we have the Scharfs participating by phone.
So the first one will be the 410 Harbor Avenue. I will let the interim zoning administrator speak to this initially.
Okay. Okay, so we have our applicant seeking a conditional use permit pursuant to section 4.2J and section 3.2C7 at 410 Harbor. We listed Harbor, but their actual address is at 100 Madison Avenue. They are a corner lot that sits on both sides and there is a door on both sides of the property. So with that said, they are seeking to remove an existing shed and replace the new accessory structure at 390 square feet, with the first floor to be used as a garage and storage space and the second story of this accessory structure to be used as an accessory dwelling unit. They have come before the Historic District Review Board. We did pull apart that application so that they could move forward with the house component first, and that has happened through the Historic District Review Board. We had advised them that they needed to come obtain a conditional use permit through the town before the Historic District could take up any alterations to the shed conversion to a new structure. So that is why we are here this evening, for that piece now to be considered by the town for this conditional use permit. And depending upon the action of the town, all the way through the town council, that will then determine if they need to go back to the Historic District Review Board for whatever might be approved under the conditional use permit. So with that said, we have enclosed a map of their property and with that what they are proposing for the location of the shed and where that would be on their property. I did want to raise this because it got raised by one of our commission members, and I did respond to that by email, in case not all of you saw that in the last day or so. There was a question about what is considered their front yard versus their side yard. Madison Avenue is considered their front yard, their frontage. This lot was part of the creation of the C... I'm going to get the name wrong.
C Cottage.
C Cottage addition, which is the expansion of the town back in the early 1900s, and it has always been treated as Madison Avenue being the frontage or the front yard component when you look at this property. I know the Scharfs identify the Bay Avenue as their address and frontage, but from the town perspective, from our mapping and from our GIS and our street addressing, we consider Madison as the frontage, and clearly the orientation of the house is from that perspective as well. So we do consider this in compliance with the zoning ordinance for the consideration of an accessory structure in the rear of the property. We have provided in our staff report all of the ordinance requirements that your zoning ordinance states relative to accessory structures, so we wanted you to have that for your review, and some things for us to consider as part of that staff analysis, that we do find that this demonstrates consistency with the requirements of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section 4.2J. They have completed and signed the affidavit regarding knowledge and compliance with the components of section 4.2J. In addition, the accessory structure is less than 464 square feet, so this does comply with section 3.2C7 and 3.2F2 and 4 of the ordinance that requires the total of all accessory building footprints to be no greater than 10%. And the lot size for this lot is 4,640 feet. So we do find that the zoning review of this is in complete compliance with the zoning ordinance. Relative to our comprehensive plan, because when we look at our conditional use permits, we try to ensure that they are consistent with the comprehensive plan, specifically under section 3A 5.2. We identify a goal to promote compatible infill development and renovation within established neighborhoods and to specifically promote accessory dwelling units to add diversity of housing types while maintaining the neighborhood character and providing affordable housing options. So again, we do find that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we find it consistent specifically to the zoning ordinance requirements that it does not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood or adversely affect other land uses within the particular surrounding neighborhood. We do not find it detrimental to the public welfare or injures to property improvements to the neighborhood, and we do not find it in conflict with the purpose of the comprehensive plan of the town. So with that said, I will stop and see if you have any questions for staff at this point on their application.
Questions?
Yep. The address is 410 Har...
Actually, the address is 100 Madison Avenue. We know the applicant had referred to it as the 410 Harbor Avenue, but it really is 100 Madison. They are a corner lot, and they do actually have a side door that fronts on 410 Harbor, but we believe their front door and the porch and all the characteristics of the house show the front door as 100 Madison Avenue.
Okay, I don't have a question then. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions from commissioners?
So with that said, as I referenced, we have our applicants online. If you would like to allow them the floor.
Would Mr. and Mrs. Scharf want to say anything to the commissioners?
Thank you for considering this application, and I think Tracy and Katie have summarized the intent perfectly. And one of the goals we have is to provide that upper-story living space for long-term rentals, teachers, contractors, that type of tenant. So thank you for your consideration.
Super. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, so public hearing, man, right?
Before you close the public hearing, we actually need to hold it.
Yep.
And see if there are any comments. And as of now, we had no one signed up on the sign-in sheet for this particular hearing.
All right.
So I don't think we had anybody who wishes to speak.
I have just a quick question. The proposed addition on the main house, that is not part of this, right?
No, that was already handled and did not require planning commission approval nor town council approval.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we have no public comments, so can I...
We can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
All right, so given that this conditional use permit is in general accord with the current comprehensive plan, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the CUP for an accessory dwelling unit at 100 Madison Avenue, being that it is in compliance with ordinance, section 4.2 and 3.2.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval of the conditional use permit for the accessory dwelling unit at 100 Madison Avenue. All in favor?
Oh, okay, did you have something?
Before you vote, could you also tack on our additional condition number two, which is that they obtain all required permits and approvals from the building and planning department?
Okay. Approval of the CUP with the understanding that they have to apply and obtain the Historic District Review Board approval, as well as any required permits and approvals from building and planning departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just offer a comment that I don't think that's required, but I made the motion.
It's probably not required, but we are trying to ensure all of our applicants are aware their additional approval is still required. This is not the all-to-end...
No, I understand that's worth cautioning. All right, so the amended motion for the conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit at 100 Madison Avenue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Scharf.
Thank you. Very much appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I end this call?
Yeah, you can end the call.
I'm going to end the call now.
Okay.
All right, the second public hearing is for Randolph Avenue, directly across from Heritage Acres Court, tax map number 83 Alpha 4-1-Bravo 26 through Bravo 29. Tom and Katie Austin are the contract purchasers as DBA Cape Charles Mini Golf with consent from property owners John F. and Lorraine A. Hutchler and Daniel C. Dabinett for a conditional use permit on a mini golf course pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section 3-8, Bowlegs Bravo, Bowlegs 2.
Okay, as referenced in the public hearing notice, this is for a mini golf course, so right now they are still contract purchasers with the intent to purchase. This is conditional upon achieving certain approvals before they will close on the property. With that said, these lots are zone commercial 3, and the proposed use of mini golf is a permitted use under section 38B2, which states "Any other commercial or professional use which is compatible in nature with the allowed uses, and which the zoning administrator determines to be compatible with the intent of the district, as concurred with by the planning commission." That question was posed to you back in February of this year, and at that time, you as a body stated this use would be compatible with other uses allowed in the C1 and C2 and C3 zoning districts, but indicated only through a conditional use permit, so that parking, lighting, landscaping, setbacks, and visual aesthetics of the proposed project can be adequately reviewed and addressed in relation to the other development occurring on the stretch of Randolph and Stone Road. Since then, we have been working actively with the applicants on this project, helping them along every stage of their development of this proposal. So I don't want you to think that they have not been hard at work. They have been extremely hard at work. With that said, we have a site plan from them. They have been before the BZA to see if there could be some alternate considerations of providing some golf cart parking on the lot. While the BZA understood the need for that request, or the... not the need, but the desire to provide that sort of alternate parking for the type of business operations they're going to have, the BZA did not find any willingness to actually remove or provide any further relief or reduction in the parking requirements, and the Austins have fully complied with the parking requirements in their site plan. As part of that, we ended up hearing some questions about, along the way, was the lot size, or the four lots combined together, those lot sizes, would they really be adequate for this type of an operation? So I did a little bit of research since then, and I did want to state that the industry guidelines for mini golf course development indicate that 13,000 to 30,000 square feet is the minimum lot size for an outdoor 18-hole mini golf course layout, with the average or general size being around 22,000 square feet. And they do meet that requirement under the lot size, and you combine all four, they're approximately about 25,000 square feet is the four lots combined. I also did want to address, because it's really not under our purview per se, but I'm raising because it would be part of the building official's review. The American with Disabilities Act does administer a requirement through their U.S. Access Board with specific development of how you do an 18-hole mini golf course with ADA complacency. And I put that out there because, yes, you're going to see on their plan, they've indicated ADA-designed holes and why that's there and the importance of that. There is a requirement, because they will have to achieve that with the building official's With that said, we want to go through the ordinance requirements, which we've outlined again in your documents, including that plus our comprehensive plan. So I want to start with the ordinance requirements, which is pretty, I won't say generic, but there are no specific standards in our ordinance relative to mini golf development. So again, we default, we fall back on just our general section 4.3, which are really the three conditions as to when we're looking at a comprehensive conditional use permit, which is, does it affect the health, safety, and welfare of that neighborhood and the people who live there? Is it detrimental to the public welfare, injures to property or improvements in the neighborhood? And is it in conflict or not in conflict with our comprehensive plan of the town? With that said, in our comprehensive plan, I have identified sections that I think speak to the value of this business concept coming forward. Part of what we are trying to do in our comprehensive plan is we've identified Cape Charles as a diversified residential community comprised of a mixture of long-term residents and new arrivals. To create a baseline for economic vitality, the comprehensive plan identifies the following as the broad direction of economic focus, that Cape Charles is a tourist and second home location, and it goes forward to describe what that means. One of the primary objectives under our Economic Development Chapter, as stated in section 3B, point 3, is to attract tourists, vacation, and second homeowners. And specifically, the plan notes the need to continue to grow the hospitality sector and expand the offerings in Cape Charles to strengthen the town as the tourist destination of choice on the eastern shore. So I do think our comprehensive plan encourages and supports this very type of business concept coming into our community. So I did outline several items of discussion for us this evening. I do know after speaking further with the applicant over the last few days, he is prepared to address each and every one of my comments and concerns or questions that I had left open in my discussion memo. But with that said, we wanted to note the location. It is directly across from Heritage Acres, which is a residential development area of our community. It is also now in a solid commercial block of zoning that has happened here. We've got the Historic Museum that would be adjacent to it, coming as you head out of town will be...
Beach Market.
Well, Beach Market is up and running and will be opening soon, just before Beach Market. We have approved and the town has signed off...
The golf cart.
The golf cart, thank you. Custom carts, they're a business enterprise as well. And of course, as you head out of town, that continues with the brewery. So clearly, we are having a mixed-use development neighborhood occurring here, which is, I think, the intent of our zoning ordinance and our comprehensive plan. Sorry, let me catch my breath right now. I did want to provide something new for your consideration again, because part of what happens in a mixed neighborhood is there are several different competing factors, visions, lifestyles, that we want to consider when we bring it to this point. So we did give you a little bit of a radial overview of how close things are to the golf course itself. We gave you a 200-foot radius and we gave you a 500-foot radius, and we wanted you to keep that in mind as we work through the rest of the items I have raised. So, make sure I didn't miss a page here. Okay, so first of all, we wanted to talk about noise. And I'm not saying this is a reason to not approve this item this evening, but we're just wanting to have the conversation. Should we recommend any parameters regarding outdoor speakers or sound system relative to broadcasting music on the property?
All right, so are you saying the applicant is going to address each one of these?
Yes, they are.
So you, I don't think, need to have to go through. It would be nice, the applicant...
Sure. And I'm doing it more for the public that's listening, that may not have read the entire staff report. So if you would like me to stop, I'm happy to stop and let it be addressed that way.
I'm happy for you to stop.
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, then. So there you go. So I've raised several items in the staff report, and I think the applicant is prepared to speak on those.
Great, that's perfect.
Okay.
Before the applicant, is that... is that it?
That's, I will stop there.
Okay. So before the applicant speaks, do you have any questions?
I had one. You mentioned 20 parking spaces, but I count 19.
Plus the handicap one, that counts.
Yeah, no, I counted the handicap, and that's the 19th. If I counted right, all I'm saying is, I'm not going to lose sleep over this, but...
Let me get back to you, let me read through, because I know they've met the requirement, because they... we went through this at length with the BZA.
Yeah, your words say that. I just, you know, say, oh, okay, let me count, unless there's squeezing something in...
There is one plan that has the course on it, not the site layout, that is a missing parking spot.
That's a missing one?
Yeah, so that, the golf course designer just left the course, and he just didn't...
Okay, so there's one more. Okay.
The actual site plan has all of the spaces, and that's what I sign off on, is the site plan.
All right.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a few. If you've already covered it, though, let me know. Any plan to sell food or beverages?
That's one of the questions.
Yep, so we want to serve one of our ice cream, we're going to have sandwiches and chips, and we're just going to keep it simple like that while...
If I can just interrupt for a second, so if really these are all questions for the applicant, I would say at this point, maybe we want the applicant to come forward and...
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Provide his narrative first and then see if he addresses the question.
Yeah, so please come forward and you got the mic. Introduce yourself and...
So I'm Tom Austin, this is my wife Katie, and daughter Jenny.
Behind the question was a concern about alcohol, beer, wine, or anything like that?
Yeah, so we want to do beer, wine, and canned cocktails. We're not going to do any like mixed drinks, no mixed drinks or anything like that.
What, a beer and wine?
Yeah, and just some of those like simple canned cocktails that are already prepared.
Okay. That kind of speaks to the noise issue, that the two are very positively correlated, and I would have just, I have some concerns about that. Any number of times, that's been shown. Okay, the... the other thing is about hours, if they had to be, if it were a good idea to have quiet hours, like from 10 to at night, 8:00, and things like that, that's all kind of tied in. The other thing that I'll make, on the, with connection with ADA compliance, is there a final... the surface between the holes and all, how is it going to be, you know, because you've got those wheels for the wheelchairs and all, and what will they be on?
I think what it comes down to is the width of the path that connects, which I think has to be five feet.
Yeah.
And it would be a smooth concrete, and actually, all 18 holes will be ADA compliant.
So it's a concrete surface, basically?
Correct. Yeah, that connect, so there'll be a path that connects each, and then each hole has to be a certain width to meet that as well.
Okay.
And we, all 18, will do that way. As far as noise, though, I mean, I think it's important, you know, certainly we've thought of this, and, you know, bringing in speakers, and we did want to have two speakers that will play some like ambient music, just to kind of create an atmosphere, but we aren't expecting like a bustling bar scene. We want a low-key place for families to come. And I get the beer and wine thing, but I think it's important if, you know, parents are taking their kids there to maybe have an adult beverage available to them. But we don't want some sort of crazy bar or anything like that, and I don't think Cape Charles has that sort of atmosphere. That's the type of pendulum that should come here anyway.
Anybody residing on a lot that is zone residential has the right to enjoy... the first words on that description are quiet.
Yes.
And that's, they're entitled to that.
Correct. I think we definitely want to keep it quiet. I honestly think the traffic coming in and out on Stone Road will be louder than we are. We're not going to have that loud music, nothing like that.
If we may, Mr. Chairman, could we just allow Mr. Austin to maybe give his pitch, your application presentation first?
That might answer many questions.
She wrote this, so I want to have her read it.
Write it down.
That's fine.
Good evening, my name's Katie Austin. We live on 506 Nectarine. Our mini golf will be unlike any mini golf you typically think of. Our focus is to mirror the town's historic and quaint charm, and that's very important to us.
Thank you.
We feel we have a great opportunity to also add some beautiful landscaping to that entrance area that when you first come in, so we can make a good impression. We're inspired by the nautical elements, the old trains, the historic architecture. We're also inspired by the horses of Chingateague, the barrier islands, and the gardens of Irer Hall. And we want to incorporate these classic eastern shore elements into our course. We want to provide, like you said, a family-friendly place for the community to gather. Our mini golf will be a fun and relaxing activity for people of all ages, and we hope that you find that our plan reflects the aesthetic of the town and will be a positive asset to the community.
Okay. Well, we had a small mini golf course years, few years ago, and it worked beautifully, not that far away from the pub, you know, and all like that, so it was, it was fine, you know, so...
Is that where the blue, wooden thing?
Well, it's near where that fence is with the painting on it. Well, it's near the, where that fence is with the painting on it, but, yeah, it's a...
No, no, it's, it's, it's Busky Side, it's where outdoor space is.
Yeah, it's right beside Busky Side, it's where they, you know, have the tables now and all like that, but, so it was very small, but, but I don't remember any problems at all of that nature coming from it, you know. It was a family kind of place.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know.
Could, we ask them then to address each one of the...
Yes.
Questions or concerns? Just take one by one.
So, when you look through my staff report, I don't know if you had a chance, or if you have it handy, I'm happy to, to hand you mine.
Thank you.
Uh, but just to walk you, just go ahead and, and respond to each one of the, the items I, I put as questions.
Okay, um, so we talked about food and drink. Um, the hours, we would be looking at what I, I guess you might call, like, a last call at nine PM.
Tom, would you mind, just, excuse me, just doing them in order?
Yeah.
Oh, we don't have the order.
I don't have the order in front of me. I, I hit each cut.
So the first...
Starting at the very bottom of this page is the first one.
Okay, gotcha.
And then all the rest of those.
Yep. Um, so we, we did talk about, we do plan on having, uh, two speakers for some, just ambient music, in general, nothing, nothing loud, and no live music, anything like that.
And, and those speakers would be, of course, probably facing south.
They'd be pointing the patio.
Yeah, so we'd actually put them closer to the front of the patio, north side of the patio, going, going towards the...
And you'd be able to make announcements, like, we have a little lost boy or that sort of thing too, and the speakers?
Sorry, what was that?
The speakers we use for announcements, like, the little lost boy and that sort of thing too, could be, is that part of it?
Yeah, we've been looking at a couple of things. We actually found those that actually looked like small little folders, they're just like this big, and they're, you know, they won't put out too much sound, and they're Bluetooth, so they really can't. Um, so that's what we're looking at, but we, we're talking to Benjamin a little bit of, about a couple of different options. Um, the fence, we're looking at a four-foot black aluminum fence to go around. Um, it's gonna be similar style to what's in the park, but four feet tall, rather than, I think that's like seven or so. Um, so, as far as the dunk, or, something, yeah, the dumpster, um, so if you're looking at the course, I went over this with, uh, Katie earlier, but on the southeast corner of the course, we're gonna have just a two-yard dumpster, which is six feet wide by three feet deep, so it's really small. Um, and we can fit it right in the corner there, and we'll have, like, an opaque screen that kind of goes around, so you won't be able to see it. Um, then, as far as hour, or, the clubhouse building, we talked about food service, so we're just doing simple sandwiches, hot and cold, ice cream and chips. Um, hours of operation, so we want to close at nine, and what we mean by that is, basically, if you come in at eight fifty-nine, we'll let you play, and then, that's it. So anyone who comes at nine oh-one, we're kind of done. And then, in the shoulder season, I'm sure it's gonna be, you know, six thirty, or something like that. Um...
And, just again, back to the food and beverages.
Sure.
I guess you've noticed, as you walk through the town, you'd be hard-pressed to find a piece of litter, and to me, that's an incredible phenomenon for a town that somehow or other has to be kept around, but anything that could be a threat to that, you know, just, please respect that fact, and that the town's utility, they're, they're fantastic about cleaning up as much as they possibly can, but it takes everybody working together to make that happen.
Yeah, definitely.
We, we are gonna have, um, trashcans, um, also, on, in the course too, in case people wanna throw something away while they're playing, and they don't wanna...
We were thinking of doing like...
Yeah, and, and most people will respect that again, but if the alcohol starts getting a little crazy, then some of these other things start to suffer.
Yeah.
That's all.
We're trying to make it so it's not gonna attract that sort of thing, the best we can. So I think the next thing's more of just a comment, um, from Katie.
Yeah, that's like the...
Um, then, you know, that's our, like, so, number seven is our landscape plan, and after meeting with you guys in February, I mean, I think it was really important to take in the beautification of, this is what you're seeing when you come into town. So, if you look at it, we've lined as much as we could on the road with landscaping. And that was a big point of putting the parking lot, so it's kind of adjacent, so you can only see the entrance, rather than having the parking lot go all the way across the front, and as you're going by, you just see a large parking lot. So basically, you're just gonna see a small entrance and then just lush landscaping. I think that will really look good when you come in.
Yeah, I appreciate the detail you put in on the landscaping, that was...
It also might provide a buffer if there's noise.
Right.
Um, yeah, that, that provides something to absorb the noise. I don't think it's gonna be terribly noisy, but that might help in a way.
Is there gonna be special golf cart parking, or just the regular spaces for the golf cart?
No, it's just regular, twenty car spaces.
Okay.
Um, then, it, that's the parking spaces is eight. So the lighting, um, we're talking, I'm sure you guys are sitting around town, and we can talk to Katie, uh, um, I gotta send in the placement, but basically the same type of lighting that you see throughout town, and what we'll have to do is we have to have a baffle on the top to meet the sky.
Right, the night sky.
Yeah, so, it'll be like that, except it'll have, like, a black top on it. And then, I think I...
Is there gonna be LED or something else?
So we want, we want it more like where it's in the park, which I think is LED, um, but it's not as bright, it's, because it's based upon women's, I guess. Um, we're working with, uh...
Robert Zlinski, he did all of the lighting in the harbor and...
Yeah, he did it all. So we're, we're using him, and he kind of had some of the ideas, but we definitely wanted to not create light pollution, so it'd be more of like a, and they're not that bright, I think it's like side light.
Yeah, a soft...
I'm not an electrician, so I'm forgetting the term to use, but...
Is, is the lighting, um, intended to be able to play miniature golf at night?
So, actually, they're going, we're gonna be really kind of leaning on landscape lighting in the actual course.
Okay.
So we're, we're basically on the east side, we'll have two of those lamps for the parking lot, and then one in the middle, kind of, um...
Closer to the bathrooms.
Yeah, closer to the bathrooms, and then in the actual course, it's gonna be just more a little bit of landscape lighting.
Like landscape uplighting, to highlight the landscaping, and just, it's gonna be a soft glow, it's not gonna be any harsh, big lights or anything. But that should be sufficient where it's safe enough for people to play, but it's also not creating a harsh light anybody.
Yeah, but the light pollution stuff is something we all have to...
Yeah, we don't want it to be bright.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, about that question, um...
Sign.
Yeah, and I, so we're talking with Andy about the sign, and I know that goes to his store board, but it's... Basically, what we're looking at is, it's six feet wide by four feet tall, and he has, um, it looks like wood, it's like PVC, and he actually, he can engrave it on both sides, and it'll be white, sort of look like white wood even though it's PVC, and then we're gonna make the lettering black. Um, and I can send that along, just so you guys can see it, but it's got kind of like a cool, or a square font, so...
We, we know that Andy knows the sign ordinance, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys, yeah.
All right, then.
(laughing) Last one.
Um, so as far as this, the stormwater plans, we have, it might have actually been submitted today by NSA. They're, they're gonna be submitting everything this week, and I know, you know, you're kind on top of that, and I'm on top of them. Um, so that should be all coming down the line here soon. I think that's it.
Um, quick question.
Sure.
Is there plan to have an entrance on the former rail side of the property, to come in that way, not just Stone Road, for, for golf carts?
For the cars, yeah.
So, we, yeah, we wanted to leave that open, so the current path that goes through, is that what you mean, so they could get...
No, I don't, I don't think so, because the cart, the golf cart path is not gonna, is gonna go past the, the golf cart path that is going to be put in, is going to go through Beach Market.
Yeah, it's gonna go past us, and then, but that's still wrong road, it's gonna go past us.
But we got, we, we do have the, uh, rails to trails that will eventually come on the railroad property.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
It was, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so...
I know they talked about that last time.
So, but that's, that's...
That's, that's a waste.
That's, that's a couple of years down the road, but all you can do, there, there are no golf carts on that thing, there are only bicycles and, and walkers, so...
And walkers, yeah, okay.
And the current temporary path, I mean, we did put on there that it had an opening on the south side, so people could get through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, we're sort of fine, and we want to keep that until everything gets figured out.
And the, uh...
I, I would like to see that, because as we've looked at our comprehensive plan, uh, that we're gonna be updating, I think that's, from my perspective, I would like to see that the golf cart path run behind that entire C-three, uh, section, and, uh, and make it all the way out to the, to brewery.
Okay, so, yeah, then, we keep that plan, and then, whatever gets figured out, we're happy to...
I think with the recent change in speed limits, you'd be fine going Stone Road all the way to your facility.
Or you could take it all the way to the brewery, right?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Yeah.
And go all the way to the brewery.
You sure can.
So...
Um, I don't know if I can do anything else.
Any other questions?
How about ten sidewalks?
So...
Well, and I'm gonna interject, because that's really not your call, that really was a conversation for this body to have potentially back with Town Council as well. Um, there's not a requirement that they would have to have sidewalks, that would need to be, uh, something that Town Council, um, would make as part of any approval or action they make.
Well, I'm just asking for their opinion right now.
Sure, I'm just making you aware, we've never even had that conversation with them about building in a sidewalk capacity to their site plan, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
We would do whatever we have to do, is the answer, but I, it sounds like if you're putting in a golf cart path possibly, then the sidewalk would not be an option.
Yeah, right, if you're gonna, the golf carts, it's gonna...
You're in an odd portion of town, the sidewalks really press on residential areas.
Yeah.
You build a house, you put a sidewalk in, you're out in C-three space, it gets into grayness, and you look at neighboring properties there, and they don't have sidewalks.
Right.
So, okay, all right.
Any other questions of the applicants? Anything else you want, like to say?
Um, I just thank you all for your time, I hope you kind of get the vision you're going for, and it's not gonna be this, when you hear mini-golf, like an amusement style, and it's not what we want at all, and we're not here to do that, I really think this would be great for town.
Great.
Great location.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we, do we have any public comments?
Yeah, I thought you did. Um, yes, we do have an email from Benjamin Lewis, um, indicating, I'm writing on behalf of Tom and Katie Austin, their mini-golf project, the project is a great step in the right direction for our town. As a resident, I'm glad to see something like this come along for young families with children. It will be a positive calling card for tourists. Additionally, it will be a B-pull tax generator, along with elevated real estate taxation once the project is complete. Tom and Katie plan to move full-time to Cape Charles and operate the business. Both of them are upstanding people who will add to the character and strength of our town. As a contractor helping the Austons get this project completed, I can say with confidence the building and plants will all blend well together. There will be no garnish, garish ornamentation inside the golf course, as is commonly found elsewhere. In fact, the plan is to use Cape Charles landmarks as part of the course decoration. These touches and many others are why this project is essential as we build back Cape Charles, one home, business, and customer at a time. Sincerely from Benjamin Lewis, President of Browder Height, Inc. Um, I think we had one other that came in this afternoon, and it looks like it didn't make it over to Tracy to include in the record. We will get that forwarded to Town Council if we actually did receive a second comment.
All right. So, do I have a, a motion to, uh, close the public hearings?
I'll move.
And we have no one signed up here, just to close the gap, yep.
So I have a, a motion to close in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. I think, uh, we have a recommended, uh, motion here, if, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I recommend that we approve the conditional use permit for the mini-golf course on Randolph Avenue for tax map eighty-three Alpha four-one-B twenty-six, eighty-three Alpha four-one-B twenty-seven, eighty-three Alpha four-one-B twenty-eight, and eighty-three Alpha four-one-B twenty-nine, on an application filed by Tom and Katie Austin, along with all attachments pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance three-dash-eight-B-two, as determined by the planning commission at our meeting on February second, twenty-twenty-one. And that this type requires a conditional use permit, and that said application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and said conditional use permit is subject to the following conditions. All signage shall comply with the sign requirements in the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section four-point-one, sign regulations, and a sign permit application will be filed and approved by the town prior to any signage being installed. At least twenty parking spaces will be provided as required by Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section four-point-five Bravo-G-three. A full lighting plan will be submitted as part of the final site plan that fully complies with Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section four-point-four-E, exterior lighting. Final site plan is conditional upon affirmative third-party reviews, DEQ, VDOT, Town's Third Party Reviewer, Environmental Management LLC, and incorporation of all comments from said reviews into a revised and submitted final site plan. Final site plan will incorporate the requirements of Cape Charles zoning ordinance, Section four-point-five-M, which details the placement and screening for dumpsters. Any other conditions as a result of the public hearing and discussion of the applicants and items raised through the staff report will need to be detailed and included as item number six.
All right, so we have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to amend the motion. Well, with regards to item number six, okay, what, what I would like to express is that the Historic District Review Board certificate of appropriate agent needs to be obtained. Permitting by code official and planning needs to be obtained. And lastly, our requirement to stop new public entry to play after nine o'clock PM. That's my, my amended motion, to add those items as item six.
With, with stop, to be determined how that's gonna be done?
Well, the, the applicant was saying that as of nine o'clock, he wouldn't allow new players to come in, those that are on the course can finish the play. So I'm just saying, fine, let's, let's write that into the CUP, so that we have that as a commitment, an operation.
Okay. I guess that's good. Okay, so, so we have a motion, an amended motion. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Not, I do have some concern on the alcohol issue. Um, I, I don't really have, uh, kind of hit my mind one way or another on that, but it's just that I think it's an issue to consider, um, and just like to get the opinion of the fellow commissioners on that.
Yeah, I can, I can add, my opinion is, I'm not bothered by the alcohol. Either they supply it now, they're upfront and telling us what they want, or they can let it go and apply for a license, just like any other restaurant or establishment, and, and go through that process, it would not even come through this board.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, and that's what they can do.
Right.
I mean, so, uh, I mean, they were upfront with us, they were upfront with us.
People can't hear you on Facebook, please talk into the microphone.
All right, thank you. I, I have, I too have, really have no problem with that. I mean, I'm sure that they will ensure that somebody gets ruly, you know, we, that's why we have police and, and sheriff, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the amended motion.
I said the amended motion. I said the amended motion. Alright. There were no, no opposed?
Well, we have to go to the motion now. We did the amendments, right? Now we have to vote on the base motion.
That's what we're voting on.
We just voted on the amended motion.
We just voted on the amended motion. I said, I said the amended motion, okay?
Alright, I'm sorry.
Alright, so the amended motion has been approved. With item six. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last public hearing is for two nineteen Mason Avenue tax map eighty-three alpha three dash one dash six three one, Todd Bricken, contract purchaser. With consent from property owners Paul G. Watson the third and William D. Watson for a conditional use permit for five dwelling units on second floor above first floor commercial pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance, section three dot six, bowl leg C.
Miss?
Sure, as indicated, this property is owned Commercial District C one, which allows for dual use of commercial residential. The applicant has submitted a floor plan with five residential units on the second floor of this building. Three of the units are indicated as one-bedroom apartments or lots and two of the units are two-bedroom apartments. I do wanna note, we have been working with this applicant for many months as well. So, we've gone through several versions of documents and site plans and considerations. So in case you happened, in case we aired on our side from, from the, the town and what documents went into your packet, if any of them contained a three resident unit or four resident unit, those were all considerations along the way. Five is what the final request from the applicant is. So I just wanted to clarify that across all documents. With that said, under section three point six C, we allow for residential units above first floor commercial provided that no such dwelling is located at the street level and all dwelling units have direct access to the street level, meaning no access through the commercial establishment on the floor level. And it is, all of this is done through a conditional use permit. As I indicated, we knew the biggest hindrance on this whole issue was going to address how the parking requirements of our ordinance would be met in this application process. So we have some things to add to that as part of this conversation. I think there needs to be further discussion with the applicant on this matter as well. In his floor plan, you will see and the applicant will speak to the fact on the first floor, he intends on having two distinct commercial spaces with their own entrances for each of those commercial uses as well as, as retaining and utilizing and, and doing the necessary building improvements for the distinct entrance for the residential units that is there today. With that said, just to acclimate everybody, this is not the actual Watson Hardware building. It is the adjacent Watson. I don't know if you wanna call it. It used to house the movie theater, if people have been here long enough to remember that, the radium, palladium? Something like that. Sorry if I don't know the name. I apologize. And so as we mentioned, the, the biggest hurdle as we look through this, it met compliance with all other things but the parking component. So we do wanna talk about that for just a minute. And we did have extensive conversation with, with the applicant on the parking issue. So, before I jump into that, I wanna come back to how we feel this is in our comprehensive plan. So again, in, in Commercial C one district, the intent is to preserve and enhance the traditional mixed-use urban nature of Cape Charles Commercial Districts to encourage the location of regional and local business and professional activities to facilitate the development of buildings in keeping with its largely national historic district character and to protect against destruction of or undesirable encroachment on these areas. As I referenced, this building used to house a movie theater and was most recently used as a side component of the Watson Hardware store. There was an, at that time, there was an opening between this building and the original Watson Hardware building. That will be closed off so that both buildings stand on their own and the applicant intends on building an entire second story floor across the full building span. So when you're looking at the plans in the area that has marked warehouse on the first floor, they would envision putting a, a ceiling there or the second story floor. So he's proposing five residential units. Currently, when you walk into that building today, there are three distinct units on that second story. They are currently being used by businesses, but that is not the, the long-term intent of Mr. Bricken as the new owner. He would like those to be for residential purposes, not for businesses. And with the addition of expanding the entire second floor across the span of the building, that provides him the ability to, to add two additional units with a, a stairwell to get you to a second story, which would then add a second bedroom to those back units with some, some lighting capacity with a skylight. I did wanna also note in their proposal, he has also provisioned space for a common wash, wash and dryer space, which again, I think is, is a, a great offering and concept to this proposal because I think that is one of the amenities that is not commonly found throughout this town. Where can you wash and dry your clothes? So I am glad that he did consider that and include that in his concept proposal. As I mentioned, we've talked and hinted around the parking and so here we go. So under our parking requirements.
Just a minute, can I interrupt on the, there's gonna be one access from the street and then there's gonna be like a corridor where you get into all five of those?
Yes, it'd be like a traditional sort of apartments.
Right, okay.
You know, approach in and, and out. And so every building, every apartment door would front into that common walkway hallway.
That's what I was picturing, I wanna make sure.
Yes, you're correct. As, as we referenced, our ordinance based upon this would require six parking spaces. And again, working with Mr. Bricken, he has made the provision for three of his parking spaces to occur on site. And I do want to highlight this because looking through prior records of conditional use permits that were approved for second story dwelling spaces on Mason, the parking has not been adequately addressed on almost most of those other applications. It was left silent in that consideration. And so I do commend Mr. Bricken for including it and giving up truly valuable real estate on the premises and in one case within to create an interior parking space within his structure to try and meet this particular issue. And I say all this, I know he is not in full compliance with our zoning ordinance at this point, but I don't think maybe we have fully exhausted any options for his pursuit to consider how else the parking requirements might be met. So I know that is of grave concern to this board and I, I am deeply concerned that we don't add to a continued parking problem that we know we have in the downtown area. So I, I hope we can have some continued conversation this evening on that very matter with the applicant. So with that said, I think that covers the staff report and if you have any questions for me.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, the conditional use permit application, the checklist only has one item checked. Where are all the others?
We actually did receive everything. We received a letter of intent from him. If he didn't personally check it, those are documents we did receive.
Okay.
We have the site plan survey. We have his full-fledged drawing layout and plans. We have all the adjacent property owners. We've received his payment. And lastly, I guess as part of this, when, when I did talk about the parking allowed in the back, it was highly contingent upon ensuring there was, he would inherit certain rights in the purchase of this property through an easement. And I think Mr. Bricken will be speaking about that this evening. I actually now have a copy of that mythical easement in my mind behind Watson's Hardware and he will have rights to that space for parking purposes. So in that regard, he is, I think, fully prepared, committed and eligible to commit for those spaces to be used and provided as part of this project.
Those are for the three spaces?
Yes. One inside the building, two outside the building, yes.
And, and that alleyway is wide enough?
Behind, behind his building, yes, it can accommodate it.
And, and the entrance can go from either side, either side streets or?
It's from Randolph, between the lots, between the two house lots, back to the hardware, back to the hardware.
Okay.
Yes.
Does, does, okay. It's large, it's big enough for the, for the cars. What about emergency vehicles that have to get back there with the cars in place?
I can't say I've gone out to measure it for that particular concern at this point in time, no. But I can say this is an existing condition.
We're having concerns based on all the others we've missed.
Yes, yes. No, and I can't, I can't say that's a current condition that's here serving this building regardless.
Right, I understand.
He brings up a very good point though because emergency vehicle needed to be used, emergency vehicle needed to be used when the collapse of the third floor balcony for Margaret and Bill Ballard happened. And so that to me is a very good point Dennis because, and that needs to be tested to make sure that at least, not necessarily an ambulance, but a fire truck can get back there. With cars there.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly.
I, it's, it's a safety issue, truly. It's a safety issue.
Um, yeah, okay, that's fine.
So the applicant is here. If we would like to allow him to present, if you have no further questions.
Any other questions for Katie? Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address and?
Good evening, my name is Todd Bricken. Currently I reside in Westminster, Maryland. I have also purchased residential property in Bay Creek on the Colony side. Plan on retiring here, so this is a project I wanted to develop prior to or before my retirement. I tend to work a lot. Don't imagine moving anywhere and never working again. So I kinda have to have something to do. My wife said I can never have another restaurant. I can build a restaurant, I just can't own it. I can't operate it, so. Yeah. I have an eleven-year-old son, so I have a few more years before moving here, but we do intend on building at Bay Creek as well. Alright, any, what was the specific questions for me?
If there's anything you'd like to add that I didn't add in on your application.
Well, part of the reason, um, I, I happen to have an architect who primarily does most of his business in Frederick, Maryland, which is a, a Civil War era town. He has done many projects that are historic. He's helped me with my renovation of an eighteen ninety-two schoolhouse in Carroll County, Maryland. So he, he has a lot of experience with this type of project, so I think he's gonna do a great job. Part of the reason, there was a couple of different drawings is because each time we talked to Katie and sort of had her input, we would go and redraw these drawings to try to, you know, make everybody happy, as happy as possible. In regards to the parking, I mean, I did dedicate the one space inside of the rear building. It is currently a garage now. So we're gonna use that. We've also revised drawings to change the location of the rear staircase so that you can park in the rear of the building with two cars. We're going to remove a building again. It's just a block building they use for wood storage. So we're planning on removing that again. So we're doing the best we can to provide as many spaces as possible. Beyond that, I don't have a solution other than finding a resident would be willing to lease me space or something, but that is, you know, that's a hypothetical, right? I mean, that's not any concrete plan. So. Any other questions that, I mean, you might wanna ask more about parking. I don't know what else to, to say about that.
Well, let's just, let's just be hypothetical here. And so you've got five renters and they all have five cars.
Right.
So what would you tell those renters, you know? I mean, who's, who gets the, the dibs on the, on the three parking spots and who gets left out? I, I just, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I understand.
Trying to figure this out. We, we are, we are acutely aware
Sure.
of the parking situation in the town. And, you know, you're not too far away from one building that, you know, has
Right.
nine units in it and they had, you know, it's a wilson building. And they don't have, they, they don't even have anything. I mean, you're, you gotta fend for yourself, so. We're, we're aware of that. So I just was wondering, you know, what, are you gonna just say, we don't have, we don't have the space here, you know, you can park across the street. We have a parking lot over there, you know? I'm just, I'm just trying to be a devil's advocate here.
I understand. I mean, I have to consider that I've operated a commercial business restaurant and we provide parking. I've done, I've never had a residential property yet. So. Yeah, I'll have to address that, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know a lot of people park out front, you know, and they, you know, but, you know, really that's for, you know, business folks, you know? But. It's something to be thought of. I know that we have shared parking in our ordinance. So you kinda brought that up. If you could find somebody to, that has thing, you could do a shared parking. It's, we, I don't. So.
Just, I guess a question to Katie. Your report says that this goes to the B Z A, parking.
Potentially that, that could be where he could seek relief from this requirement. But I think part of what I was hoping would happen this evening is, is those who may be more familiar with the property owners and some of the activity in the downtown area, are there potential properties that are amenable to having some sort of shared parking lease arrangement with other property owners? And I think there might be. I know one recently was brought to my attention today that's not too far away from this location. So I'm, I've been working hard trying to think of some names and put some thoughts in people's heads to help Mr. Bricken's issue as well as potentially other issues that are now percolating in the pipeline, very similar concepts of residential development on Mason Avenue. And how are they going to address the parking requirements? Again, Mr. Bricken is new to the neighborhood and new to the community, so I can't say this was his opinion or position. But from others who have been operating here in the community, they were a little surprised to know that we would actually require them to adhere to this component of our ordinance. So that is one of the things that we are faced with is the challenge that this component of the ordinance has not been effectively applied on all projects.
Well, be careful though.
Yes.
This ordinance has been revised relative to parking.
Right.
So it's not something that's been in existence for ten years. It's, it's relatively new, a couple of years. And we specifically put in requirements, new uses or changes in use, units above the first floor shall require to be conformed to the parking requirements. Kinda put a stake in the ground and saying, hey,
Sure.
at some point in time, you've got to draw the line.
Sure. And, and part of this is, is to see if there is an avenue for Mr. Bricken to explore, to look at some shared parking.
And, and I'd say we wrote in
Arrangements.
those, those kinds of words to be able to do that.
Absolutely. And, and I'm, I'm trying to see if, if this body could potentially at least help me identify so I can identify them to Mr. Bricken and any other applicant coming forward. If you are familiar with any property owner or arrangement that might be happening in the downtown area. Cause I am not wholly familiar with all of those offerings at this point in time.
I had an idea. Just a stream of consciousness on this.
I could only say something like, you know, some of the, some of the homes on Randolph, like, like, uh, where the alley, where the, the road cuts in there, those properties, I, I don't know if there's any, any possibility, you know, with them.
Actually, my idea was even closer. If you have a business relationship, for instance, with the owner of the two new buildings that were built on the south side of Randolph Avenue, or excuse me, Mason Avenue, Patrick Han. His parking spaces are for his residents and those, and those business owners. I don't think I've ever seen them full. It might be an idea to maybe approach him to see if maybe you could have a business relationship with him to use some of his parking.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Sure.
Because it's, it's very close.
It's right across the street.
It's versus a hike kind of thing.
Right across the street.
Yeah.
So not in the medical building, but?
The new, the two new buildings. Matter of fact, you're right across from the distillery.
Yeah.
So that, he has a parking lot right behind that.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Okay. It's, yeah.
It may, it may be, it may be a potential solution.
Okay. So Howard Hand, the?
Patrick Hand.
Patrick Hand.
Now, how would, how would you tie it to that particular location as opposed to the people who live here just parking in front of the building? You're gonna police, you're gonna police license plates now?
Well, I think in their relationship, it could be a sign in front of a parking spot that says reserved for.
For.
Well, that's fine over Patrick Hand's area. I'm just saying, what prevents the person saying, hey, it's raining, I want to go in the front door here, down the hall and up to my apartment?
Right.
I mean, that happens with all the other ones anyway. I mean, unless we police it.
I'm just asking, how, how would you expect to police that?
I don't know, you, do you have a good?
I don't have.
I don't either. I mean, we all know that we have a, a parking problem here. And we tried to fix it like he said a couple of years ago, and we still have a parking problem. And so, but that's a good, I, I, that's, that's a good start, I think so.
It's worth exploring.
Sure.
Yeah.
For future applicants, this will be a roadmap, should this be successful.
Well, we're gonna have, see, I, I'm, I'm hoping that we're gonna have this because, you know, more and more businesses are finding that, hey, you know, we've got space upstairs. Make some money on this, you know, and.
Actually, is it just, not relational to this, but Ken and Katie and I discussed this when we had a sort of a mini work session on future land use and land use. And we'll bring that up when we talk about land use in a, in a couple of days because I, we think we might have a potential idea to do some satellite parking.
Well, I, 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 I've heard about the satellite parking.
Yeah.
I, I've heard that there's, that that might happen here, okay? But, but that's still, how do you get from the satellite to there, you know?
There's another location a little bit further away where Strummer and Randolph are. And that owner is Bo Yang.
I'm sure you've touched that point.
There's a fairly large parking area. And he may be another person that would be willing to, to lease some space in there for you.
Strummer and?
And Randolph.
Baseball, last name is?
Y A N G.
Like it sounds like. I, I guess, I mean, I probably.
Well, I, I commend you for at least, you know, like, like Katie said, at least, you know, you're, you're, you're trying to solve the problem, but you just, you mean, you, you don't have any, any, any more land, so.
No. And I, I guess I'm under the impression that the town is encouraging more short term.
Oh, we are.
We are.
We are. Well, we're, we're encouraging what we're looking for, and, and we're not the only ones, but workforce housing. And it came up in the first, on our first one where they're gonna have a, a long-term rental and they want to rent it to a teacher or somebody that's in the service industry. Because there's no place, they can't afford it here.
Yep. There's also, in my opinion, not affordable nightly rentals either because everything I've looked into, there's these huge cleaning fees, service fees. You know, they attract you with a two hundred dollar a night fee. And next by the time you're done, it's four hundred and fifty dollars a night or three, three fifty or. That's my opinion too, I mean. If I was coming to town, I would find it expensive for an evening out night.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody, any other questions?
The loft, just, do you have to build up or is that within the existing?
In the rear is thirty feet in the, which used to be the theater stage. So that is a thirty foot ceiling and a ground.
So you, you don't need to go up, you're building within?
Right, whether or not we raise, the current height of the main building is to be decided, but we're planning on using reinforcement, proper steel or whatever. I did bring a contractor with me.
So, so those, so that, that second bedroom, the loft bedroom is above the first bedroom, right?
Right.
Yes.
And I know the plans are hard to read. We did bring a set of the larger, his proposed site plan, if anybody wants to look at it. But I know it was hard to read in that little eighty bitty screen size.
So I, I just, I just want to, I saw when I read the, the package here that your intent is to have, I thought I read that you would have short-term rentals and, and then long-term rental, rentals, is that the intent?
Well, the first floor would be leasing to.
Right.
The second floor, I didn't have an intent on which way to go with it.
Okay.
And just to clarify, in our ordinance, in the commercial district, we don't specify length of term.
I know, right.
Of a rental, period.
I know.
So I just wanted to make you, yes, I, I have expressed to Mr. Bricken, there is a strong request from the community that we provide more affordable housing options for our workers, to the community, not just those who work in the downtown area, but who work in, throughout the county, who are looking for more affordable apartments. But I, I also recognize this is valuable real estate and it's costly. And we understand that maybe his proposal may look in doing short-term rentals to help cover some of those expenses too.
Any other questions?
Actually, I was, as I read through this, your intent is to have three one-bedroom apartments and two, two-bedroom apartments, right?
Right.
And so I think the parking requirement actually goes up a little bit.
She said six.
It goes above six. Because there's a possibility with a two-bedroom apartment, you could have two cars for one place.
Except I don't think our ordinance does it based upon number of bedrooms, it's on the number of units.
Yeah, it's a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
The dwelling unit, so it's not the bedroom?
It's not the bedroom.
Okay, never mind, never mind.
Well, let's, when you go to the table, again, it's, it's confusing, I played around with this. You, you got, single-family residents talk two spaces per dwelling unit, okay? Multi-family residents, one space per one bedroom. Mixed-use developments, one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. One space per dwelling unit for age-restricted plus one additional space for two hundred square foot commercial gross area. Now, again, this is new construction, so you, you gotta take it with a grain of salt as to how you're addressing. But it just says, if you're changing the use within an existing building, you need to meet these requirements.
Yes.
So I, I'd question too, where you got the six.
Okay.
Just, just re-review per the table and explain it when you come through the next time.
Okay.
You spent a lot of time on parking and it's still.
Yep.
Gets tough to interpret.
And it's gonna continue to get tough, not just on Mr. Bricken, but any future application coming forward.
I know.
That may preclude the development.
That's correct.
Of the second story or higher in, on Mason.
All right.
Great, good luck to you, sir.
No, no further questions, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for, for doing this because, you know, we've always said that you'd have all the space on the second floors in the town and, and nobody was using them. I mean, there was like one place. Now, now, now it's, we've seen a renaissance here, so it's, it's real great.
I mean, I have a passion for renovating buildings and historic use of, I mean, that's what I like to do.
And the Parsons Building is, you know, that's a prime one, that, that, yeah.
Well, the hardware store will eventually get units.
Probably.
Some point in time and sitting right next to you.
That's sold too, it's sold, so, you know.
Waiting for real estate.
It's a race to the, the sun on the dotted line, I guess.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and I should know while Mr. Bricken is here, in our paperwork, we indicated he's a contract purchaser. We've been going back and forth on what date he's finally going to closing, I think it's Friday. So it is Friday now, as I mentioned, we do have the easement, which was one of the remaining pieces that his attorney was waiting, and I think we're, they're at this point to go to closing, just to make you aware of that.
Do we have any?
We have received no public comments and no one is signed up for public comment tonight.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right.
Just to be sure, we've just had three separate public meetings, public hearings, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, you did.
So, just looking, it's not quite what the agenda says, but I got it now, thank you.
We're, we're trying to, trying to put together a process that makes more sense.
So for me, other than parking, I'm ready to approve a conditional use permit contingent on resolution of parking spaces.
I agree.
Whether it be, you know, through the BZA or through, you know, business arrangements with others per our ordinance.
That's fine.
Right, right.
I didn't write one out for you, but I can help you write it if you'd like me to. So if that's where you're, you're in the vein of, I would actually propose a, a motion to approve the conditional use permit application at two nineteen Mason Avenue, presented by Mr. Bricken at the tax map listed for five residential units, conditional upon resolution of, of meeting the requirement of parking spaces, whether onsite through a shared parking arrangement or by receiving a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals on the parking requirement, parking requirements. And that would be your recommendation to the town council. I would also add in those similar conditions we did for the golf course, just to make you aware, there's still final site plan reviews that are required by our ordinance, such as compliance with the building code, things of that nature. So I'm not asking to adopt a final site plan, which was presented as part of this packet. There are still tweaks happening to that.
Yeah.
So that's part of it, is getting us to a final site plan submission to the, to the town.
Katie, does that include Jim's suggestion of leasing, possibly leasing a space from?
Shared parking.
Okay, got it.
And that would have to be evidence with, with the actual document, legal document, yes.
All right, so I'll make that motion as stated by our zoning director.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I think we heard it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Do we have any, any public comments? Or any item?
We do not have anyone signed up for general public comments outside of our public hearing.
Okay, thank you. We have, do we have any unfinished business? I see you have none on here, so. New business. Scheduled public hearing for tax, following conditional use permit application. Six-three-zero Tazwell Avenue, tax map eighty-three alpha three dash one dash four thirty-six. Kate and Steve Keeler for an accessory structure with dwelling unit pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance four dot two, Bowleg's J. So.
Well, Katie, you were looking for any general comments before we set the, the public hearing, right?
Yes, if there's anything you want me to research, flag, ensure I include in the staff report that I should be aware of, that's outside the normal. Otherwise, if you would give me authorization to send this to public hearing, I will do so for the month of December.
Well, the, the comment I would offer on this, not opposed to public hearing, but the fact that their intent was to build out and use as an overflow area for family and guests, but not as a rental, that does not meet the requirements stipulated in our ordinances. That no accessory dwelling unit shall be occupied by any person whether paying a fee for such occupancy or not for a period of less than thirty consecutive calendar days. So we've had people approach to build an accessory dwelling unit for the purposes of family. And yeah, I have family coming in for the weekend or the week or whatever, and that's where I'm gonna, as opposed to enlarging my house. And we have had occasion to say, no, I can't point to a specific case, but we've had those conversations. So I have hardship with their request doesn't meet the comprehensive plan as we had envisioned when we put the ordinance together.
Okay. So you actually do not think it should proceed to public hearing, period?
No, it's, if we're giving feedback to the applicant, that's my feedback. I'll open it up, you know, to others, but to me, that was a, a showstopper that doesn't meet the intent of what we envisioned for accessory dwelling units.
I agree, when I read this, that was the first thing that came to my mind, that this did not, you know, if that's the purpose, it doesn't meet what we're supposed to.
And I'm gonna be the devil's advocate on this, it just then advocates for people to say, okay, I like the accessory dwelling structure, I'll live in it and then I'll rent out my home.
And, and that's fine, until we change the ordinance and that's what we need to, and we've discussed changing.
I'm just making you aware, there's a simple way to circumvent this.
That's correct, and we need to fix the ordinance to address that aspect as well.
So do we want to, we want to table this until?
Well, if you would authorize me to go to public hearing, I will advise the applicant of these concerns that, that we feel this really does not meet the intent and would not be approved or recommended by this body because it does not meet the intent of the ordinance, to see if they still would like to proceed.
Right.
We will give them that, that option.
But could you cancel the public hearing?
That's correct, if they, once they are advised of this conversation, if they wish to withdraw their application, absolutely. But if they wish to still proceed, at least I have the authority to, to schedule the public hearing and let the chips fall where they may.
It sort of goes against the goals of what we're trying to do in town with accessory dwelling units of providing additional housing.
Long-term, yeah.
Additional long-term housing.
Long-term housing. And so as a result, I mean, that's, that sort of doesn't even.
And maybe as part of this, they will say, okay, if that's the requirement, then we will rent it out.
Right.
They may make that decision, I don't know. So we will inform them of this conversation and let them decide if they wish to proceed to public hearing, knowing that there is already a stated concern and opposition to any approval of such an application, at least a recommendation of, a favorable, a favorable recommendation, and see if they wish to still proceed or not.
And we've been down this path before, yeah.
The members of board don't know how much previous interaction you've had with these applicants or what was discussed exactly, but, you know, I was certainly encouraged on the five alpha item when the person volunteered what their intent was. And I, I thought, well, that person really understands the full import of why this is as it is, so, you know. So I'm sure you do as well.
Okay. So do I have that authority under those conditions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that feedback is provided to the applicant and that we schedule a public meeting on December seventh for six-thirty Tazwell accessory dwelling unit.
Second. Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to recommend a public hearing on.
December seventh.
December seventh for. Three-zero Tazwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Report of officers and committees. Anybody have, we have no committees out. Any, anybody have anything they want to report?
Katie, I like your monthly report there that you added to our.
I, yeah.
At the end.
I did too, unfortunately, my, uh, my lap, my iPad is acting up again.
I, I did indicate at, at last month's meeting, just to make, give you some context of any subdivisions that come through, so you have an idea where they are.
So is that, is that one that went through, is that, is that a go to, to, to start, uh?
Not a go yet, no. I've received the application, is currently being.
Reviewed, okay.
Yes, so I'm making you aware when those come in so that you see them. I didn't include a picture of Dreams by the Bay because that's actually, I've told you about that a few times, they've been pending since before me. Um, I think they started back in November of last year, they, they did their first submission into the, into the town. And so I'm just giving you the update that they finally seem on the Dreams by the Bay, um, to finally be making some, some progress on resubmission both to VDOT and hopefully soon to the town, they have to get through the VDOT comments first, candidly, uh, before they wanna submit back to me, because if VDOT continues to have issues, we're gonna have to keep working the documents again and again until they get in compliance with VDOT. So I do believe Dreams by the Bay will be coming back in with all their comments, hopefully addressed in, in compliance with what we've outlined for them. But on Village J, um, that is at this point, that's a conceptual plan, site plan. Um, so I'm still doing my review of that and, um, also looking on water and sewer capacity, which we're doing some analysis in-house at this point within the town, uh, to look at our water and sewer capacity to ensure that we truly can, um, adequately handle all of the approved subdivisions that have happened over the last few years.
So, so what you're showing here is in accordance with the PUD?
Yes, it, this is actually one of the planned, there may be some slight tweaks, but yes, it's still within that, it's still within the, the lot allotments.
Gotcha.
All of that, but yeah, there are some slight, slight tweaks to, to what that layout may be in terms of where exactly every lot is within Village J, things of that nature, how the road flow is, so we're still looking at some of those. Um, as I mentioned, part of what they're looking for is, is to, to get concurrence that the town can sign off on water and sewer capacity so they could start some of the, the underlying infrastructure work, um, while we get to a final plat. Um, we're not quite there yet, so, but we're just making you aware that this has come in, is right now it's a conceptual plan leading into a preliminary plat. So I'm putting you on notice, so we start to have some documentation actually in our public records where we are in, in subdivisions coming forward for approval, that's all.
Any indication as to when they're gonna update their PUD document?
They are working on that now, um, the town manager, um, after some conversation internally. We asked the town manager to communicate back to Bay Creek, we're ready for them to, meaning our office would be ready to actually handle the review and processing and time and energy involved in such a, an effort and endeavor. I know they're now working on that to get a submission into the town. So I don't have a timeframe when that's coming in.
Yeah, they, they, concerned, none and a half is, is all the ordinances that we have passed since their submittal in the last, this is two thousand seven. We have changed ordinances.
Right.
Extensively and they have not kept abreast of that in their PUD document.
Correct.
A matter of fact, I looked at the PUD document, there's actually nothing in there about accessory dwelling units, nothing, nothing.
Right, there's a perfect example.
That's correct.
So.
And, and this, this development of Dreams by the Bay is where?
Um, it's over the old Coast Guard.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha, yep, yep, got it, okay.
Sorry, I took out the address because I've had it in there.
Tinian, right?
Tinian, yes, yes.
Do we have in our ordinances some, some, uh, mention about proffers for, is, is we find that we do have to expand water sewer into new areas? That developers will be required to pay for that.
Sure. Um, just, just a general quick primer on proffers under, under the Code of Virginia. Uh, proffers can only happen as part of a conditional rezoning application. So that means my zoning is R-one and I really need to go to R-three. And so you have to petition the town to rezone, you can do a flat-out rezoning, but we really want to steer them to do a conditional rezoning. And as part of that, you can make them, not make them, they can extend proffers or, um, conditions to help offset that type of development. Um, but if it's already zoned, I'm gonna pick R-three where you can have multifamily dwelling units, I don't know if you really can, I'm picking this out of my brain. So if you're in R-three and you wanna do multifamily housing by right, then no, you cannot compel them, um, to contribute financially towards that or to make it part of what they would have to contribute versus just providing a cash, uh, payment out to the community to do something or require them to do sidewalks, um, outside the norm or to help offset what might be your impacts to schooling of those, of those individuals or put in some regional transit, bus stops, no, unless there is a conditional rezoning, um, application that is moving it from one zoning district to another zoning district, that is where you can seek proffers. And when I say seek, you can communicate with the applicant, what are some of the challenges to getting to an effective or affirmative approval of that consideration, that application?
Right.
And how some of the, the challenges might be overcome.
Right.
And they might be receptive, they might not.
Correct.
And they might advance proffers and they might say, those are your challenges, we're standing by the application. And just because they fail to advance proffers, that is not a sole basis for doing it. But I presume if, if we were seeking some obstacles to overcome, they were real obstacles to us. And they may be a reason why you cannot, uh, achieve a rezoning application because you can't overcome those obstacles. Meaning the town can't afford for a fifty-unit housing de- development to come in in this area town because we've never expanded water or sewer over there and we don't have the money to do so. Something like that. So that, I just want everybody to understand, if you weren't familiar with proffers and how they work under the Code of Virginia, that's, that's the basic of them.
Thank you.
And any proffers also, um, have to be directly tied back to the development proposal.
Right.
So i.e. it may be just for new housing, but you can't require them to build you, um, a bike path all the way out to the light, for example. That isn't necessarily a direct correlation to why you need housing units, that's all.
Yep.
These are like the, the new quarter.
Yes, they are duplex units, yes.
Well, they.
It's, it looks very similar to it.
They, they did, uh, they did another, it, the, the people that are supposed to put that in are the ones that just finished the Palmavellas. And they're still undoing them, which are duplexes.
Okay.
It's the same, same, uh, company.
Okay.
Yeah, I may not know the architectural style.
And they also.
Because that's not my concern.
There's also another one that, that, I don't, if you've gotten this yet, but I, I got it as an email, uh, as a Bay Creek owner. Is that they're, you know, where those Palmavellas are, now they're talking about putting in a multi family, uh, units, like the fairways.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware there's probably another submission coming in, maybe early twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Yes. So I have been, I've been kept very busy in this job, yes.
So the, so, on, down here on the standing staff reports, you have on C, the staff annual report on the activities of the planning commission?
Yes, um, I'm actually in the process, I haven't, I haven't finished it.
Okay, so you, you have, you have the previous ones.
Yes, I had the ones that were done in, uh, two thousand six, I don't know if one, I don't have sixteen, but I think seventeen, eighteen and nineteen I have. There was none done in twenty and I'm now doing, of course, twenty and twenty-one.
Okay.
I am making some little tweaks to it because I think it needs to be a very, um, usable document for this, for this office as well as for Town Council. And when I say that, I really wanna make sure we're tracking all the subdivisions that get approved in any given year, what those lots are, what parcels and tax parcels they, um, are associated with. I'm also fleshing out any zoning, zoning ordinance amendment changes, both that were fully approved by council as well as those that were just debated but died on the vine, uh, concepts, as well as zoning map changes. So I am fleshing out that document, it's taking me a little bit longer than I thought, but you will have it, um, for part of your December meeting for review and hopefully adoption. Um, once that happens, it will also then be passed on to Town Council, uh, for, for them also.
Thank you.
And so, yes, we are, we're doing that for all the boards, I'm having to do a two-year annual report, so. I did want to, to jump in, I did have one more thing and I forgot to put on here. I need, I need you, or I'm going to correct, just so you're aware, your twenty twenty-two calendar. Because the chairman, he kept insisting about the date of elections for next year in November.
So I, I saw, I thought of that, so, so, I, I think what we should do is we have an alternate date which is the third Monday.
Right.
Of the month. So I think that, that instead of, because personally, I ha- I have another commitment on every second Tuesday. So I have to, I have to, I can't go, I can't be in two places at the same time, so.
Well, actually, because you had us move the meeting to the second Tuesday.
This time.
In November, November.
Yeah.
We're actually asking you to actually restore it back to the first Tuesday of the month because the election day does not fall on November one. Am I correct?
Oh, is it next year?
Yes, yes.
Oh, really?
Yes, so we, we should have held our guns and said, no, we looked this up, but I didn't.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Well, we'll meet on the first Tuesday.
Good, that's right, I'm good.
I am going to correct your calendar for publication on the website. We are back to meeting November first of twenty twenty-two, the first Tuesday of the month of the year, okay?
Maybe they thought it was some, something wrong because Halloween was the day before or something.
Trick or treat.
Um, and I know before we jump on, our work session for this coming Monday is, uh, the discussion in the land use chapter. So tonight, we are gonna hand out some working materials for each of you. We are giving you a very large-scale aerial map of most of the, of the downtown area. Um, it excludes the big component of the PUD to the south, just because that's really not our concern with zoning allotments. Um, but it includes all the central part of town.
Does it include, does it include the, the, the area along O-Cape Charles Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it does. Um, and each one of you are getting this, it's, I know it's hard to write on with marker, so if you're gonna have notes, maybe you wanna have some sticky, sticky notes, if you need some, we can get you some. Um, but we'd like you to bring your working version to the meeting on Monday so that we can each kinda use that as our jumping off point. We'll keep a master one, that will be then the, the agreed-upon commentary of what we want on our, our land use map. I'm also giving each of you a copy of at least the most recent, what's the advertised version of our zoning map. It doesn't contain all of the recent zoning changes that have happened, but at least it gives you something to see and have in your possession as you're looking at this aerial map, so. I know when, when we met last week to discuss this a bit further, to make sure we are making progress on getting something to this board, I think it was found to be an extremely helpful product by both Jim and Ken, so we wanna extend it, so all of you are getting it, so.
Okay.
Don't leave without getting your set.
Yeah.
Okay? Now I'm done.
Okay, so we know the next meeting is, uh, December seventh.
And the work session is next week.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, three, three o'clock.
It's Monday, so we will get a packet out tomorrow electronically.
Okay.
But it won't include this map, these two maps, you're getting.
We already have, yeah, okay, all right. Any, any, anything else by any of the commissioners? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you.